Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Perfect. I get my nice blue power, but the audio is good. And Councilor Palmer, if I want to check in with you today, the mayor is unable to make it tonight. So I'm hoping you can be our presiding officer.
Sure. Can you hear me okay? I'm at an unfamiliar computer, so great. Thanks. So that looks like that's everybody. Okay. Oh, wait. Counselor Clark, did he say he was gonna make it or not?
He is. He did accept the invite, so I do expect him to attend.
Okay, I'll give him. I'll give him a minute.
Thanks.
Okay, I did. I did send him a text. I think we'll just go ahead and hope he catches up with us. So I will go ahead and call a special meeting of the Talent City Council to order. The date is December twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, and the time is six oh two. Roll call, please.
Counselor Clark, I'm sorry, Councilor Pranamov.
Here.
Counselor Grider.
Here.
Counselor Pestejo.
Yeah.
Counselor Byers.
Here.
Counselor Parry Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Ayersblood is not present. Acting president will be Counselor Pranamov.
Yeah, and I did get a return text from Counselor Clark. He is trying to get into the meeting. I'm wondering, we could forward him a link.
I'll take care of it immediately.
Great, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, meeting accessibility staff.
This is a question for the public. If any attendees need this meeting translated into Spanish, we ask that you raise your hands now. In the publico, si agen necesitas, interprestan español, por favor, las suman hoy, and I'll watch the attendees.
Great, thanks so much, Hector. So the next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Raise your hand, let me know. Seeing none.
Oh, Councilor Palmer, I probably have my actual hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Other than virtual, it's too hard to find that button.
Right. Got something blocking my picture, so I couldn't see it. So please go ahead.
The five point three other business of the agenda, just to discuss upcoming schedule for council meetings.
Okay, so we're adding a five point three to discuss upcoming council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Uh. Very good. Next on the agenda, speakers heard on non-agenda items. Do we have any speaker request forms?
As of five o'clock this afternoon, we did not receive any speaker request forms.
Okay, thanks very much. Looking to the audience, I see an audience member has his hand up. If we could bring Chris Luz forward. I'm assuming he wants to speak.
Hello, Madam President. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good, thank you very much. Good evening. Well, the last couple of meetings.
Sorry, Chris, please state your name and your city for the record.
Thank you. Chris Luz, City Phoenix. For the last couple of meetings, Mary Darby has mentioned that one of the problems that you guys incurred with the last proposal for the urban renewal district was communication. And she seems to assume that there's inappropriate or communication that wasn't good enough out to the public. But I can assure everyone that the communication going out was fine. I mean, Chief Hanley from the Fire Department, the district, the Fireman's Union, the board, the county, Phoenix, hundreds of town residents heard what you guys want to do regarding shifting money from your own city in the Fire Department and putting that money into urban renewal budget. So they heard you guys just fine. I think the problem is not communication, but simply listening. I mean, from what I see, sometimes the listening isn't taking place like it wasn't before. I know when the Fire Department was speaking to you guys, you didn't seem to address their concerns. And I waited for meeting after meeting after meeting to spend ten, fifteen, twenty minutes addressing the concerns of the Fire Department, but it never came about. The concerns of the county weren't discussed, and the meeting's audio that Darby and your city manager were at wasn't publicized. So I think it's more of a listening problem, especially when it comes to your own city manager. Last two meetings, she's giving you guys advice on how to give an olive branch out to the fire district. And you guys didn't take her up on that olive branch. You could read between the lines if you're saying, hey, guys, we're gonna run into a problem if we go full tiff. And we're gonna get into a fight with the Fire Department again. So let's offer them an olive branch. Maybe something like a boundary reduction or an under levy. And you guys are still going for the full tiff, the full ball of wax, which is gonna lead into a huge fight with the Fire Department and the public. I would encourage you to listen to your city manager and read between the lines. She doesn't want that much defunding for her own budget. She goes to Fire Department, doesn't want that. So I would encourage you guys to take a step back and at least do the under levy option that you passed up on last week. So again, just so we listen to your manager, listen to the public, the Fire Department. That's what the problem is. It's not communication, communication out. It's listening coming in. And that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Phoenix resident and former mayor of Phoenix, Chris Luz. I think that's it for speakers. Counselor Parry Miller.
Thank you, Council President. I was actually wondering if I could have some clarification just based on speakers heard on non-agenda items. What is the best practice for us if someone speaks on an agenda item? I just, I didn't want to interrupt, but it just seemed like that would have been a more appropriate comment later in our agenda.
Um, yeah, I, I, I think that's probably the case. It wasn't clear in the beginning what he was going to be talking about. We're really not supposed to discuss non-agenda items per our council rule at this point. But, you know, your point is well taken. I think it's something that perhaps we should develop more, more process around Councilor Byers.
Um, thank you. Totally different topic. I, and perhaps I missed this, but I just wanted to state that Counselor Clark has joined us, and it's wonderful to see him here with us.
Thank you so much for putting that out, and for the record, we now have Counselor Clark among us. Okay, so that's it for speakers heard on non-agenda items. Moving forward to new business. Item five point one. Thanks so much. Consideration of lease with Talent Business Alliance for, for Town Hall Office. Um, before we go into the staff report, I'll recognize Counselor Parry Miller.
Thank you. Um, so I currently am not working for the Talent Business Alliance, but I was working with the Talent Business Alliance up until last month. So out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself from this agenda item and this vote, just so everybody knows.
Okay, uh, thank you, Counselor Parry Miller. All right, let's go ahead with the staff report. Jordan.
Thanks. Before I begin to double check, do you all see the PowerPoint slide on your screen?
Yes, the five point one.
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, perfect. Okay, great. Um, so this is a lease for the Talent Business Alliance to the Town Hall offices. Um, the Town Hall office has been used in the last distant memory, I think, of most of us, as the Talent Chambers offices. During the pandemic, the Talent Chamber did go dormant and has revamped its Town Business Alliance. So we are looking to renew the lease between the city and Town Business Alliance for the use of that space. So what you all have before you is our typical lease language, and this lease is for a three-year contract. The lease is at market rate, which we asked CPM, which is about a buck twenty-five per square foot, and it's two hundred and twenty square foot office. Um, per our leases, the city will pay electrical, water, and sewer while the tenant pays for all other amenities. And in this lease, there is the option to sublet with agreement to the city. I know Town Business Alliance has been in talk with other groups to share the space. So if a subletter comes forward, that'll come before the council to consider if they would like to sublet along with Town Business Alliance. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this lease or the use of the space.
Questions for staff? Um, I, I do have a question for you, Jordan. Did you have a chance to discuss this with the, the president of the Talent Business Alliance, and was she okay with it?
I did. Yes. And I will. She doesn't seem it's exact lease language, but I'll tell you with her, if there are any substantial amendments to it, I will bring it back before council.
Okay. Great. So if there aren't any questions, let's do a roll call vote.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Pranamov?
I think you may need a motion first.
Oh.
Oh, sorry, guys.
Well, I'm reading one on the screen. Okay, sorry, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Clark?
I move to approve the lease agreement for the use of the Town Hall Office by the Talent Business Alliance.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I need deliberation on the motion. Okay, now we can have a roll call vote, and Hector, since I'm substituting for the mayor, I don't believe I, I get, I'm allowed to vote. Except to break a tie.
Thank you for clarification.
Sure.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Grider?
Yes.
Counselor Pestejo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
And Counselor Parry Miller. I'm sorry, she recused herself. Motion carries.
Thank you, Hector. Moving on to item five point two, consideration of forwarding urban renewal plan for public review. Staff report?
Yes, so the City of Town, as you all are aware, is considering an urban renewal plan to help support the recovery from the Alameda fire. City has prepared a draft urban renewal plan and report with feedback from the council. Um, and we're at the stage of now considering moving that draft to the public review process so that we can receive feedback from taxing districts and community members alike.
I'm sorry, Jordan. Apologies for interrupting, but I forgot to state that because I do live in the urban renewal district, there's a potential conflict of interest. But since it's potential, I will be participating in the discussion. Sorry to interrupt. I just remembered at the last minute. It's hard to do this on vacation. Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. So before I switch to the actual PowerPoint to show you guys a quick summary of that then report, I do want to give a really big thank you to Elaine Howard, who was with us tonight, and Nick and Ally from Tiberius Solutions. They all have been putting the midnight oil in over the holiday weekend to help get these planner reports ready. So Elaine and team, thank you so much. And I will now switch us to the other presentation. One second. You now see a slide that says urban renewal plan to recover it and revitalize?
Yes.
Superb. So as a reminder to council and to the audience, we are in the urban renewal consideration process. For the last few months, we have been drafting an initial plan. And we are at that point now where the council can decide if we want to shift from that draft to releasing that draft for the public review period. As a reminder, during public review, we inform all taxing districts of our consideration of the plan. We present the Jackson County Board of Commissioners. We present the City of Talent Planning Commission, and we hope to host a town hall, hold it in public hearing, to get feedback on this plan. Once we get the feedback, city council can decide if they'd like to make any changes to the urban renewal plan. Once any changes are made, city council will then consider a referral of the plan to the ballot for the public vote. Hope will then vote, and if approved by the voters, we will then adopt by ordinance the urban renewal plan. So we are still at the early end of this process, looking to shift from our initial plan stage to the public feedback stage. So this presentation itself, I'm gonna give you a quick overview of the urban renewal plan and the urban renewal report. That plan and report are in your email inboxes as well as online. They were finished in the nick of time today. Um, and so we'll give you guys all time. I'll hit the really important details tonight at the presentation. So the mission of this urban renewal plan is to recover affordable housing, revitalize commercial areas, upgrade city infrastructure, and increase our residency to and to decrease our risk of natural disasters. This is a urban renewal to support disaster response post-Alameda fire. The urban renewal area, before you all, is majority the burn scar, particularly picking up those areas that need additional support for recovery and in part our central business district. Now, a large portion of our central business district was not burned, but is being included because the Alameda fire had a major impact on businesses by, A, both losing customers with a, with the loss of housing in our area, and B, the financial spaces, sorry, the commercial spaces available now are in that central business district because all of our other commercial districts, pardon me, they did burn. Um, there are some small plots of land that are not part of the burn area, and those are specific, I can find my mouse, those are specific to urban renewal projects that relate to either decreasing our risk of natural disaster or helping support affordable housing. Any questions on the urban renewal plan area? I will share this is one hundred and ninety-four point four seven acres, which is about twenty-two percent of our city's geographic area. The goals of this urban renewal plan are to recover our affordable housing. City lost forty-seven percent of our manufactured homes in the Alameda fire. At that time, manufactured homes were one of the most prevalent sources of affordable housing, so housing for folks with lower incomes. The, the manufactured housing that's returning is no longer at that same price point. So we're really facing a huge deficit in the affordable housing needed to recover our community that we lost. We would like to revitalize commercial areas. We lost sixty percent of our brick and mortar businesses to the fire, and our commercial areas is the one that's coming back the least. We've only had fourteen percent of property to have submitted a building permit to rebuild the commercial areas that were lost. We're looking to upgrade to the infrastructure. Many of the neighborhoods that are building back are building it back at significantly higher density than what was there before. The speed at which this density is occurring means that the city is not able to provide the infrastructure improvements necessary to support that level of housing. So urban renewal can be a tool to help assess what is needed and then implement those needed projects once identified. And then, of course, we would like to use urban renewal to increase residency and decrease risk of future natural disasters. That includes recovering our lost tree canopy, putting infrastructure in place such as emergency alert systems, upgrading our pipes to seismic levels, things that we can do to really help increase our safety and our resiliency in the face of disaster. The specific projects identified to achieve these goals are on the board in front of you. I won't spend too much time on these because we have gone over them in previous meetings. I do want to highlight a new one that I, oops, pardon me, a new one that I added here. Assessment of publicly owned properties for development, based off of feedback from last meeting where we included additional parcels and talked about the desire to better understand the potential for development on those owned parcels. Also, feel free to wave and ask questions. I'm flowing through here. All right, tax increment financing. So based off the boundary that was set at our last meeting, Tiberius Solutions has run the financial analysis for the urban renewal area. Um. What we found is that the project capacity, so the amount of money to be spent on projects, is eleven point six million dollars. This is the cost we estimated to be able to achieve the projects named on the last slide. Um, to be able to pay for that eleven point six million dollars worth of projects over an extended period of time, since you can't do all the projects at one time, we estimate the need to have a maximum indebtedness of fifteen point one million. That's the amount the Urban Renewal Agency can borrow over the lifetime of the urban renewal district. In total, the Urban Renewal District is expected to collect seventeen point six million dollars, which is the total tiff financing used to pay back debt, the principal and any interest that has been borrowed to complete projects. It is expected to take seventeen years to collect that seventeen point six million, so this would be a estimated seventeen-year timeline ending in twenty forty-one with the, with this current scenario projections. By the way, both of these tables can be found in the Urban Renewal Plan Accompanying Report. That's both online as well as in your inboxes. Table eleven shows the estimates of when the agency would be able to take out loans and to what amount of loan they'll be able to use when. So you can see here the first six years, so that's the loan A and loan B. We expect about five point two million in borrowing capacity for the agency. So it'll really cover a lot of the projects upfront. And we'll say you can see those interest rates are higher than a year and a half ago when we were looking at these urban renewal projects. Thanks to the increasing rate hikes by the Fed. Okay, and back to other taxing districts. So tax increment financing. So tax increment financing is the reallocation of tax revenue from other taxing districts for the purpose of reinvesting in the urban renewal area. So this chart that you see before you, which is also in the accompanying report, shows by tax district and by year, how much tax revenue is going to be reallocated or anticipated to be reallocated to the urban renewal district. At the very bottom, you can see the total amount reallocated over the lifetime of the urban renewal area. For the city of talent, that's estimated to be about four million dollars over seventeen years, same for the fire department. And Jackson County, which is the next highest, can expect about two point five million. I will say this is substantially lower than what was done in our first round of draft plans, largely due to the smaller maximum indebtedness in the project scope that we're achieving. The next slide I want to show you is the impact to education.
All right, question?
Yeah.
Okay, so those are nominal dollars?
These are nominal dollars.
Okay, so if we say, look at the year twenty forty-one, city of talent, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. That means that's three hundred and ten thousand dollars in twenty forty-one dollars.
You, I apologize. These are in twenty twenty-three dollars. These are in real dollars.
Okay.
Yeah. All charts you see tonight are going to be in real dollars.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, so looking at the impact of the TIF financing on education districts, I want to remind everyone the way education districts are funded are a little different than the other general government taxing districts. So the way a property tax revenue helps fund school systems is that the property tax revenue goes into a large statewide fund along with other additional revenue sources that then gets divvied up amongst school districts based off of per pupil basis. So typically, when there's less property tax revenue than expected, the state puts in higher levels of funding from other sources to offset those impacts. Thus, urban renewal has a much smaller impact on school districts than compared to other governmental entities. And you can see here the education districts in our area are the Education Service District, Rogue Community College, and Phoenix Talent School District.
Can I ask a question about, oh, let me recognize first Counselor Byers?
I was just going to ask a clarifying point. So Jordan, what you're saying about the school district, the Phoenix Talent School District, for example, is that an urban renewal plan will not actually financially impact the school district to any large degree because the state will backfill funding.
Yes, and I'd love to invite Elaine Howard forward to just better explain it.
Hi. Excuse me, I actually think you did a great job explaining it, Jordan. The reality is, we can't say whether urban renewal has an impact because the legislature determines a per pupil funding basis, and they allocate funds based on whatever they get in on permanent rate levies and other sources of funds that they have access to. So in essence, what they've done in the past is backfill any funds to meet that per pupil funding level. Though, and no city that has urban renewal automatically receives any less funding because they have urban renewal, and a city who doesn't have urban renewal doesn't get more funding. So it is a delicate balance because there's no guarantee the legislature always will backfill everything, but historically, they have, and historically, that per pupil funding level does not decrease.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to say is, we get confused a lot about whether these are year of expenditure dollars or not. These total up to the total amount of dollars that you will take in tax improvement revenue over the life of the district. So they are actually those year of expenditure dollars, and it equals that seventeen point six million, which equals the total amount of tax improvement revenue you're expected to take.
Perfect. Thank you, Elaine, for clarification. So these are not twenty twenty-three dollars. These are nominal dollars.
Okay, and so is, and so is the, the total amount is also spread out. That last bit, Elaine, so the total amount is dollars every year, whatever the dollars of those years are, so it's a mix. Over time, great. And there's one other, since we're talking about schools. One other question or comment is that, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do and that we've always been trying to do since the fires bring our families home. And if we are able to create more housing for families to attend school indirectly, we can help support the schools by increasing student, or at least help make sure that they don't lose students from the district. And I think that's one of the things we're trying to do by making, creating more housing and making it affordable. Great.
Yeah, and actually, in the accompanying report, we do have some data from the school district, sharing how many students have been displaced by the fire. And they did have a two hundred and eighty student enrollment, less than they had prior to the fire. So, yes, one of the goals of this urban renewal plan is to help support our school district by helping keep young families local.
Very good. Thanks so much, Jordan. Any other questions on these points? I just want to say that I do see a hand up in the audience, the time for the audience to make comments will be a little bit later on. So you can keep your hand up if you like, but we'll get to you later. Counselor Greider?
Thanks, Jordan. Sorry that, because I don't have that report, but could you tell me real quickly, what year was that enrollment, where those numbers from that they shared, about the two eighty?
Yeah, so it was compared to twenty twenty, end of year twenty twenty, compared to spring twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
So I will share, you know, the next steps after the council, if council decides to forward this draft plan and report to the public review process. It would start with notifying the other taxing districts of our intent to consider and giving them the chance to provide feedback. It will include a presentation to the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, presentation to the Talent Planning Commission, and then a town hall and a public hearing for our local residents to provide feedback on. And so with that, I'm going to end this slideshow unless there's any additional questions and open it up to council. Yeah.
I do have a question, and I'm sure you've done this. So if we were going to refer this, there's a date, there's a magic date in February that we have to give the ballot title. And I assume we can't provide the ballot title until we've actually referred it.
Correct.
Okay, so that's, is that around the twenty-fifth or so?
So I will say that we must submit our documents to the Jackson County by February twenty-fourth to get initiative on the ballot. If we all, if the council decides to forward the urban renewal plan to the public review process tonight, I will send out the notification letters tomorrow, which would start the forty-five day period, which would end, I believe, it is Monday, February twelfth and Monday, February thirteenth. My goal then would be to have the public hearing occur at our regular council meeting on February fifteenth. So the council then has about a week to a handful of days to consider if they're ready to send the plan to the ballot or make any changes before they do.
And one other technical or process question, and I know I read this, but I forget what it said. Whether we actually have to approve it, and then it goes for referral, like conditionally approve it if the referral passes, is that how it works? And if that's the case, do we need to do two meetings?
Yeah, so the way it works is we'll actually send it by resolution, is the tool we use to send something to the ballot. If the ballot votes yes, what we'll then bring to you after that May election is an ordinance formally adopting the plan. That ordinance will require two readings and then a thirty day period before it goes into effect. I will say this plan is written with the assumption that if approved by the public, it would go into effect prior to October first of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and that is important because of tax deadlines and that sort of thing.
Correct.
Okay, great. And it looks like that postponing really isn't an option. We really need to make the decision to begin the public review process tonight.
Correct.
Okay. Terrific. Okay, so that's it for the staff report, Jordan?
That is.
Okay, more questions from council? Counselor Byers?
Thank you, Jordan. In our last extensive discussion of this, not that long ago, there was, we requested both to see the full TIF picture and that impact, but we, as a council, had also looked at a much more flexible option, with the term of which is escaping me right now. But I'm wondering if you can please just both for the record, for people listening, and for my own benefit, refresh the details of what that more flexible option is and how that figures into this overall picture that we're looking at.
So that term is under levy. And what it means is that the Urban Renewal Agency can decide not to take all of the tax revenue that they would have received on the full assessed value of the urban renewal area. So they could decide every year of, hey, we'd like to make sure this amount goes back to the other taxing districts rather than to the urban renewal district. At our last conversation about this, which was on the twenty-first, council at that time decided to move forward with looking at what the impacts would be with a full TIF, meaning no underleaving. They have requested that during this public review process, we share with them more information about underlevying and how it might support taxing districts, as well as asking for a better understanding of the financial impacts to the taxing districts to understand what level of under levy would be appropriate. So at this time, it's not included, but it's definitely an option moving forward for the final plan the council would consider before sending to the ballot.
Thank you. I have a follow-up comment.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you so much for that refresh of that. So for the record, that option is not off the table, and it will be discussed in the outreach to the impacted taxing districts as we move forward.
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that refresh, Jordan.
More questions from council for staff? Okay, Counselor Clark?
Yeah, excuse me. In reading the plan, this morning, I was looking at page seventeen regarding the timeline, and in the report and in my previous, you know, in my experience with urban renewal, it's the maximum indebtedness that really counts in the timeline is for estimating and planning purposes, and that's the way the language reads in the report document. But in the plan document, it reads, "The tax increment financing process shall be terminated no later than fiscal twenty forty forty-one", which seems contradictory to the language in the report. Also, on page seventeen of that document that says, "The timeframe of urban renewals is not absolute. It may vary depending on the actual ability of the area to meet the maximum indebtedness."
I couldn't find that mute button. Counselor Clark for clarification, and I can work on clarifying that language in future plans. It is maximum indebtedness that really sets the timeline of the urban renewal district. So if urban renewal ends up collecting less than anticipated, it could last for longer. If it ends up collecting more than anticipated, it would last for less time than anticipated. There is a process to follow for amending the expected time period of urban renewal.
Okay, that may have been the piece that I was not thinking about, and I think we did go through that process about four years ago with our existing urban renewal because we hadn't met the maximum indebtedness at that time. And then, you know, we were just maybe a year, a year off or something is all, but that jogs my memory and that makes sense now.
Great, and I would also love to invite Elaine to comment as well.
A couple of just statutory references, I guess. One is that a duration is not required, but it is sometimes put in if you are wanting to give assurance to taxing districts that the area will end within a certain timeframe. So putting the duration provisions within the plan is a voluntary action. It's not required by state, excuse me, by statute. So you need to just understand that. And the other thing I was thinking of when Jordan was talking about the under levy is we've put a duration provision in, but if you decide to under levy, you won't reach your maximum indebtedness in the seventeen years because you'll be giving a portion of that money back to the taxing districts. So in this forty-five day time period, if you decide to do something or put something in about under levy, you may want to also then consider some partnership language in the duration provision to address, you know, if you under levy, that it might go longer due to that under levy. So just two comments here.
So I'll just jump in and make sure I understand. Under levy is something that we can decide basically to do at any time on a year-to-year basis. And if we do under levy, it doesn't mean that there's less money coming into the district. Over time, it just stretched out further. We're basically postponing the TIF, part of the TIF.
So an under levy does not reduce your maximum indebtedness authority. And like Counselor Clark said, it is that maximum indebtedness authority that by statute determines when an urban renewal area ends. Many, many of the plans that I've written recently do have that duration provision in them, but again, that is a voluntary provision that's put into the plans.
And one more follow-up question, if we were to revise it, that would be a minor revision, not a major revision. The, the period.
The way that substantial amendment provisions are written within this draft plan in section one point one three point three, change in the effective period of the plan and the duration invalidity is a substantial amendment. So it's not, the way it's written now, it would require a full process through the substantial amendment process.
Yeah, and I don't, and like Counselor Clark, I do remember when this came up before. I don't remember it being a, I don't recall it being a substantial, yeah, you're shaking your head. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, sorry. That's, that was, that's my memory as well. I remember it being something the staff presented to us that we voted on, but I don't remember any discussion about an extended process in that instance.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem like, you know, if we under levy a couple of times, that we have to go through the whole thing again just to stretch out the time period. Especially if that's not required. So sorry, go ahead, Elaine. I see your hand now.
Yeah, and I mentioned that this provision has been in a number of plans that I've written recently, and it's been put in really at the request of other taxing districts because they say, if you're going to tell us it's a seventeen year plan, how do we know it really is a seventeen year plan and it's not a thirty year plan? And so if you put it under the substantial amendments, it means that you you can't just with a resolution make that change. Um, you you have to go through a process and say, this is changed and these are the reasons why. And explain it to the taxing districts. Um, so that that's be become for some of the plans that I've written recently, a a give and take between the taxing districts and the city adopting the plan. And Jordan, you may want to chime in more there.
Yeah, and I would recommend to the council that we do include the optional timeframe um just to help give that assurance to the other taxing districts that this is a plan that is very focused on, I'll need a fire recovery. Um, we do expect there to be an end date for this urban renewal district. Um, and it also, as Elaine said, shows a commitment to engage the other districts if that were to change down the line. Um, that being said, this is something that is optional that we could change, um as Elaine said, for the final plan um to be considered.
Um, questions from council? Go ahead, uh, Councilor Perry Muller.
Thank you. So I know you've walked us through this several times, Elaine, but can you explain what a substantial amendment would look like if we were to go through that?
Sure. Um, that's a great question because these terminologies always get confused. But a substantial amendment is going through the similar process as the adoption of a new urban renewal plan. So an agency has to begin a substantial amendment. It has to go out uh to consult and confer with the taxing districts. The planning commission has to review it, has to go to the county, has to go to the city council for the two hearings on a non emergency ordinance. So it's the same process really that you're using to adopt this particular plan. If it's just focused on that one piece, of course, it's not nearly as big because you're not redoing all the goals and objectives and changing all the projects. You're just saying, hey, guys, there was a recession that lasted ten years and we weren't able to get the amount of TIF that we wanted. We're still intent on doing these projects. Um, and so, yeah, I've worked with a number of agencies across the state where they've had these duration provisions. We've had to go in and change them, um but are able to explain why, to say, you know, this is what happened. Um, and and these are the reasons why we need more time.
Thank you, Elaine. Um, any follow up questions to that? And so I have a follow up. Um, first of all, and I and I'm trying to remember what happened with the urban renewal the last time. What we're talking about is the duration of the plan. We're not talking about the duration of the agency. The agency would continue to function and, okay, take care, take care of whatever needs to be taken care of. Um, also, it just seems like it might be a disincentive um to under levy. And I'm just wondering if that's kind of has come up in your experience before.
We we had, I think in our new board plan, we talked about this a little bit. Um, and we talked about under levy or not. And yes, if you under levy, your plan is going to take longer unless your tax increment proceeds are much higher than what you projected. If your tax increment proceeds are higher, so you have more bill that a higher value than you projected, so you're giving your money in more quickly. You can evaluate an under levy and say it's not going to hurt us time wise because we have this extra development that we didn't know for sure was going to happen or didn't um didn't know to account for. So it really depends on the amount of tax increment revenues that you're getting in. But that is why I suggest if during these forty five days you talk about that under levy more, that you do go ahead and address that section of the duration wi- with some language around if if the agency decides to under levy, then projection should be made for the increased length of our time period of the plan, and that should be, you know, suitable. So if the taxing districts need or want money earlier, there has to be kind of that recognition that it does, yes, men potentially make the plan go longer.
Okay, thank you so much. This is kind of a new wrinkle that we hadn't talked about before. Um, and then and just one other thing, again, I should remember, but don't really. For the substantial amendment, it's the same process we're going through, whereas there's the forty five day process. But it's not like where we have to have agreement. For example, if we were building a public building, it's not where we need agreement from uh the top three taxing districts or anything like that.
Correct, you do not. But you do have to, you know, if you go through the consultant confer process, it's the same thing. If you get comments, you have to address those comments.
Okay. Good, thank you. Um, other questions from the council? Sorry, Councilor Byers, because your background is yellow, I just don't see it. The hand until I look at the other side, but please go ahead, Councilor Byers.
Um, I I'm just asking to make sure my perception of what you are describing, Elaine, is um a a solid read. It's sounding like what you're describing with this under levy process slash with this potential um larger amendment process to to the overall plan involving other taxing districts. It's sounding like it makes it a much more a a process that really um requires ongoing engagement between all of our impacted parties, I should say. Would that be a correct understanding of that adjustment to how a a urban renewal project works? If there is not under loving versus when there is?
That's a good question. So let me uh explain that. I I think there are two parts to that question. The statute does require if you are going to consider an under levy that you consult and confer with your overlapping taxing districts. So if you do a permanent under levy, so you say we're always going to give back fifteen percent of our revenues. And you do that one time consultant confer with your taxing districts because you're telling them that's permanent, then you don't have to do that every year. But if you decide to under levy this year and then next year you don't, and then the next year you do, you then require to consult and confer again with those taxing districts when you start or do a new under levy. So that that that's the provision in the statute. I think that if you decide to do an under levy, you could change the language in your substantial changes and your duration and validity section to say if the link, if the agency decides to do an under levy, and if that under levy is projected to increase the timeframe of the area, that increase of the timeframe of the area would not be a substantial amendment. If it was due just because of that under levy. I I think you could change the language and and we we didn't address that now because we didn't know that an under levy was something for sure that you're going to do. So if in this forty five day time period and you get comments and you decide to do the under levy, I'm just suggesting that you also then address those two portions to make it not be so administratively difficult to do the under levy to to make it easier for you to do um and be responsive if that's what you want to do.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thanks, Elaine. Um, and I and I have a question. Uh, just putting this in context, this this plan that we're looking at in terms of maximum indebtedness is a lot less than what we were looking at a year ago. And um because there's like, there were several numbers and I and I don't have them in front of me. Um, could you or Jordan um percentage wise? Uh, is this uh the current plan half as much as it would have impacted the taxing districts last time? Or, you know, forty percent? I'm just wondering uh what percentage of this um plan is compared to what we were talking about uh some time ago?
Jordan, are you finding it out or do you want me to look?
Um, if you don't mind, I don't, I'm not connected to the city server right now. So Elaine, if you have access to that old draft, that would be great. I'll look through my email here.
Because I want to say it was sixty.
Sixty two point five uh was the last plan, I believe, sixty two point five million.
So that was the maximum indebtedness?
It was. And um this maximum indebtedness is fifteen point one, Jordan. So it's much less than half. It's a quarter. What the, I don't have my calculator right here, but.
That sounds right because fifteen times four is going to give you sixty, right?
Right.
So it's, so we're talking about less than twenty five percent of what um we were talking about last year. You know, in a way, we're already under levy uh quite a bit. So um I I think that it's it's good to um to have this discussion during the forty five day uh public uh input period as we talk to the other task taxing districts and maybe figure out what we want to do as far as the language around um uh, you know, uh whether it's a substantial amendment or not, uh writing in that language. And I'm I'm thinking Elaine and Jordan that this is, it would be perfectly appropriate for us to solidify those questions after the forty five day, after we've gotten input from everybody. Does that sound reasonable? Okay, great. Thanks. So I'm I'm satisfied that those questions we can, we can leave um until later. Um, anybody else uh want to weigh in? Okay, I think at this time, and somebody correct me if this isn't our correct um order of doing things. I'm I'm inclined to uh hear input from um the public. Does that sound okay, folks? Okay, um, so I'll first ask staff if we have any speaker request forms on this agenda item.
Um, I double check the public testimony email and we have not received any additional speakers we heard.
Okay, so nobody planned to speak, but it looks like we have some people who were moved in the moment um to address us. And I will take them in the order that I see them on my screen and forgive me if that's not the order you raised your hands. Um, uh, staff, could you bring Derek Manzy forward to speak, uh then Mark Anderson and then Daniel Wise? And um if you could please state your name and city for the record. And your comments will be uh limited um to five minutes.
Derek Manzy, City of Talent, just making sure you guys can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Um, so one of the big issues with the previous iteration of the uh Tura proposal was the proposed impact on the uh impacted taxing districts and how those proposals were basically a snapshot in time. And so the previous one was January of twenty twenty two. And we've now moved to January of twenty twenty three. So my question is, based on the slides that were shown earlier, um, is there any calculation in those projections that are taking into account the rebuild or is that just a static snapshot as of what we know to be the case right now? And I know you're not obligated to answer this question um as I ask it in the moment, but I think it's an easy answer. And I think it's very important uh for those of us that are going to be voting on this in May uh to know these projections are just a static snapshot or if there's any kind of estimate on the proposed taxing districts impacts based on property values as we expect them to increase over time. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Um, you know, I I think I'd kind of like to take all three of the um of the citizen inputs, resident inputs, and then you can answer any questions you like after that point. Is that okay, Jordan? Because I know you're ready. Okay, uh, let's hear from Mark Anderson.
Pardon me, um, next is Mark Anderson.
Yes, please. So Mark, you're going to need to unmute yourself. So Mark, I don't know if you're seeing um a microphone with a slash through it. It's showing us that you are muted. Um, are you able to unmute yourself? Okay, let's, um, Mark, we, you, um, you're still muted, um, but I'll give you a chance. Uh, we'll move on to Daniel Wise. And Mark, if you get your microphone good, we'll get you, we'll give you another chance.
Okay, I show myself as unmuted. Can you hear me?
Are you great, Daniel?
Thank you. That's the fun of these uh Zoom meetings. Um, which uh brings me before I comment on this particular thing of just my.
Please state your name and city.
Again, Daniel Wise, sorry, Daniel Wise, tell it. I just want to uh in in uh hopefully not using up my time, but um the frustration at this kind of forum where the uh it's it's where it's not a forum where we get five minutes to speak our piece without really getting the the discussion that would be ideal. So I hope that we can create an opportunity where the public can be heard and responded to um. So that said, um, I also want to comment, it's really hard for me to hear Jordan's uh audio. And this has been true in other meetings. So I just, I don't know if there's anything you can do about your microphone situation. Um, I was surprised I I uh was at City Hall yesterday and I saw the agenda for the meeting and the special meeting that I I admit to not be diligent about following agendas and meetings, but I was surprised to see this on on the agenda. I hadn't realized how much the urban renewal plan had been moving forward. And so with that surprise, I just, I hope that the council can really it take the lessons from the last time around where you get a a huge public outcry towards the end of the process and possibly even include a section on the city website or somewhere that that includes what's going on on urban renewal. Here's the plan. Here are the discussions. Here's the timeline. Here are opportunities for input and so on, because otherwise we just, it just ends up at a meeting where you have to make a big decision. Um, I am still very concerned about the uh um, the whole um using urban renewal to solve our problems regarding uh redevelopment of the city and the infrastructure that we require with the level of redevelopment that's going on. I'm kind of getting out of order of my my speaking points here, but um that the again, I think we need to be proactive, not only with the public, but also with the other agencies. If at all possible, rather than using maybe in addition to using the urban renewal plan, planning process or uh instead of doing something that's more of a win win teamwork project with these other taxing districts um with public uh and with private agencies and private uh public private funding. Um, that I I think that what's, what I'm not seeing yet tonight, and maybe I've, maybe you've talked about it at other meetings, but is the the um, again, the the more inclusive aspect, rather than just top down, this is what we're going to do. Uh, something that is uh including more input on that. Yeah, similarly, uh this, just getting information, I I tried to review, just finding the historical and current information about the. Yeah, similarly, this, just getting information, I, I tried to review just finding the historical and current information about the process. Other meetings where it's been discussed. It's really hard for me without reading every agenda, listening to every meeting. To find out where it's been talked about and what has been said, so. Public site. Under levy, I think you've already covered it, that, you know, if you, if you take less money in now, but you have the same total taxing authority, then. You're going to have to extend it, and so that's not really fair. It's a, it's a false promise. That it will have less impact unless you can really say we're going to under levy and we're going to reduce our goals. Although this project is less impactful than it was previously, as you just said, it's about twenty five percent. According to your projections, I'm still concerned that it's. The increment financing is based on a, an artificially low tax base. Because it is this year, which is still a year, a lot of the rebuilding has actually occurred in twenty twenty two. So delaying once again to twenty twenty three would be my preference to give a more fair approach to. To doing the urban renewal and more fair to all the other districts. And as I said earlier, I, I think that there are a lot of the same issues we had with the previous plan. That it's not really win-win, it's not inclusive of the other agencies and, and all of the parties of interest. But it's, and including talent, which is losing a lot of, a lot of funding. I think we need everyone on board, so I, I'd encourage you to actually not pass this on for a public review at this point. But to continue to work out the, the entire plan, think it through more. Make these, these changes and get it right first before we go and we get the input from the agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, Mark Anderson, are you able to unmute? Okay, so Mark, if, if you do get, if you're able to figure out your microphone or call in. Please go ahead and let Hector know via email. That, that's one way to do it. Okay, great. So Jordan, if you would like to address Derek Mancy's question, sorry to make you wait. I just didn't want to get into a back and forth and any other questions that you heard, I think, you know. I know I did hear Daniel's concerns about not being able to find things easily on the website, and I know that's just really been a time crunch. And I'm sure, and I, I know there's a new website coming too that I'm very excited about. So I'm sure that can be alleviated, and I think also the. One thing that I've heard you say that I'll, that I'll just say at this point, that this is the beginning. Of the public input process. This is not a final decision. The decision will be made on the May ballot, actually. So Jordan, please go ahead and. Respond and fill in some blanks as you heard them.
Absolutely. So Derek Mancy did ask how the projections were made for urban renewal. And I'm gonna tell a tale in two parts here, because we did separate projections for both residential assessed value. And commercial assessed value, particularly for Burn scar area, since we did lose such a substantial amount. Of improved value through the fire. So the way that we projected, what we expect the rebuild to put back on the tax roll. Is we downloaded every single building permit that was applied for. Between September eighth, twenty twenty, and November twenty twenty two. And we took all those permits, and we figured out which ones were attached to a burnt property, so which ones were rebuild permits. And we calculated when we expected the value of that rebuild to go on the tax roll. So when do we expect the rebuild to be complete for the residences? And so using this method, we then projected how much we expected to land on the January twenty two tax roll, which was this year. Kind of as a way to make sure we were accurate in our projections, and then we projected what we expect to hit the January twenty twenty three tax roll. The January twenty twenty four tax roll, and the January twenty twenty five tax roll. So that's how we estimated the projections of residential for things that already pulled building permits. Properties that are residential that burned, that has not yet pulled a building permit. Is we anticipated that they all built back, particularly a single-family homes, since that's the majority. We expect that assessed value to hit somewhere in between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty five. So we added that on based off of how many properties are left to file for a building permit. Now, commercial, on the other hand, is very different, because we've received so few building permits for commercial. So we have estimated the commercial rebuild and added it into the assessed value by taking. One, the permits that do exist, we have a handful of permits for rebuilding commercial properties. And then two, we have what's called the planning documents for a lot of commercial spaces, where they come and they work. With our community development staff to do different planning things like lot line adjustments, or to go over their plans. Before they actually submit for building permits. So we took all those playing documents and said, if all of these projects are going to be built. How much square footage would they add on into that burn scar area? And that square footage, we then estimated it about a two hundred and fifty three, two hundred and sixty three dollars per square foot real market value. And that came out of the assessor's office. They have a, a formula they use. And so that's how we anticipated the commercial rebuild to come back on. And then outside of the rebuild, we'd set expectations like what we typically see for talent development. You know, how quickly are new houses, new commercials being built, and that's what you'll see after the five-year marks, or around twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven. A slowdown in the assessed value that gets added to the tax roll. So Derek, I want, one that took way longer than I thought, all of you, I apologize. Last thing that I can add into future presentations, particularly our town halls and public hearings, so that folks can understand how projections were made.
Thank you. That was a really thoughtful and thorough explanation, and it's true that we're still putting these up on YouTube.
Uh, we are, yeah.
So we can watch again and again and again, if we didn't get it the first time. I know I never do. So thanks so much, Jordan. Really appreciate it. Okay, I see that Mark Anderson's hand, I don't know if it's still up from before or up again, but. Can we just give it one more try? Hector?
Can you guys hear me now? I'm so sorry.
Mark, no, it's not your problem.
Well, it is kind of my fault. I'm, I'm computer illiterate. I need Derek Rand, Rand, or whatever is it? Yeah, that guy Derek to come fix my computer.
Um, so please state your name.
My name is Mark, Mark Anderson. I live in Talent, the city of Talent.
Yeah, five minutes.
Thank you very much. In listening to this, I applaud the fact that this is reduced from the original plan. I think that's wise. But I still think it's an overreach personally, at a time when our city's trying to rebuild. To take money from city budget, take money from school district budgets, take money from fire district budgets, and even library budgets. Doesn't make sense to me at all. There has to be another way, and I admit, I'm not schooled on what those options are. I can't offer other suggestions. I think the motives of the council and the urban renewal are great. To re-to, to try to rebuild our city. I just think there's got to be another way to do that. Even if we move this one more year out, till the rebuilding of the majority of the homes has been done. Then we could begin to address maybe on a more honest level of projections into the future. From what I understand, this is still with the burn scar percentage of our town, one of the largest urban renewal districts. That our state has ever had. And admittedly, maybe that's because of the fire. I get that. But I think it's an overreach. I think it's using a tool that is not fit for what it was designed for. The urban renewal, as I understand it, was for blighted properties, properties in the area of a town that were not being developed. That could be with some planning and with some urban renewal intervention brought back to life and reinvigorated. And bring increased revenue and businesses back to the city. If there was a way, for instance, in my thinking, to just take the urban renewal plan and apply it to the commercial districts. The areas of our businesses that were burned and do something like that, or the properties that you had mentioned in your overview, Jordan. That are maybe owned by the city that could be used for development in those areas to do some of this housing that we're talking about for. Affordable housing, that would make a lot more sense than to take the vast majority of the burn scar. And turn it into an urban renewal district, freeze the tax base at whatever level you choose to freeze it. It just doesn't really, to me, look like the smartest long-term way to go about that. And so I just wanted my voice to be heard, and I'm looking forward to some of the town hall meetings. Chance to understand it a little better, and I'm so glad that we're taking this to the city to vote. I think you'll find that the city is going to be very, very active in this process. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thanks, Mark, and I'm glad Derek was able to help you get that working. Okay, anything else from staff or council? Jordan, do you have a motion for us to consider? Okay, great. And just to clarify, what this motion will do, will give you the ability to put something out tomorrow. And start the forty five day clock, so we can make our February date. With the elections office with only a couple of days to spare. At this point, I will entertain a motion. Counselor Perry Miller.
Thank you. I move to forward the urban renewal plan in accompanying report to the public review process.
Thank you. We have a motion and two seconds. I heard, I think Counselor Byers beat Counselor Clark by a split second. To, to forward the urban renewal plan and accompanying work, sorry, accompanying report. To the public review process. Counselor Perry Miller, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, just very briefly. I just wanted to thank Jordan and Elaine and everyone for. All of their really great work, continuous and never ceasing work on this project. I am excited to be able to send this on, and I look forward to hearing from our fellow taxing districts.
Thank you, counselor. Would anyone else like to weigh in? Counselor Clark.
Yeah, really appreciate all of the detailed research and careful consideration. That staff and our consultants have. Put into developing this plan. And, and. I am really excited to get to this point and go to this next step in the process. And really excited about the potential of this plan to help us recover from the disaster of the fire. You know, other municipalities in our region, including Medford, Phoenix, and Central Point. Have urban renewal areas that they have used. To address blight in their, in their cities. The Oregon revised statutes state specifically that municipalities may form an urban renewal agency. To assist in recovering from a disaster, and that's what this plan is. And I think it's, I think it's appropriate. I don't think we will be able to have as much impact. As much positive impact for our community without it as we will with it, and. And just really appreciate all of the, the real careful consideration that, that's gone into. Developing this plan, so that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Pesteza.
Hi, thanks. I just want to echo what the last two counselors said. I, I really appreciate. The level of detail and the thought that went into this, and we didn't really talk about it tonight, but in particular. It was really helpful for me in my decide, decision process to. Understand how the urban renewal is going to help complement the other funding sources that are out there. That was one of the, that was brought up by several of the other special districts. And it, I think it's something that needed to be addressed, and I feel like this plan is really. Complementing what, what we're going to be able to do with other funding sources as well. And so I'm really happy to see us getting to this point. Thanks, Jordan, and the rest of your team.
Thank you so much, counselor. Counselor Byers.
Thank you. Yes, I want to, I, it's at this point fourth, all of the gratitude for the hard work. That has been put into laying the foundation for this project before we take it out for input. I'm. So grateful for that. There is such a wealth of information about this, especially in the audio. From our December twenty twenty one meeting, Jordan and Elaine had just fantastic amounts of information. So for those people who are looking for even more depth and nuance about this whole conversation, I would encourage them to listen to that. I know I've re-listened to it. I also want to note that not only is this plan a great complement to a lot of the other funding sources identified by Jordan. That are out there, it's also a complement to a workload that Jordan has presented that the city is looking at over the next few years. And I see this plan as a force multiplier for a lot of those projects. So I'm excited to get this next step of input. And of hearing other people's perspectives and, you know. Thank you again.
Thank you so much, Councilor Byers, and, and I definitely concur with the sentiments expressed. I also, I know some of you in the audience have been following these meetings diligently, others of you, maybe this is your. First meeting in, in quite a while. Again, the YouTube channel does have some really excellent presentations. From Jordan, and what was the date of the one that you just listened to again, Counselor Byers?
December twenty twenty one.
December twentieth, okay.
No, twenty one.
Oh, sorry, December twenty one. There was one, we had some sort of technical difficulties. It wasn't, wasn't the best Zoom one, but, okay, great. And just following those, those PowerPoints that we got from, from Jordan is just great as far as putting a lot of perspective. Terrific. Okay, if there's anything else, let's have a roll call vote.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Pesteza?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much, Hector. So you got a lot of work tomorrow, Jordan. Thank you so much. So we have an additional item added to the agenda, item five point three. And I don't remember what that is, so go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to do a quick discussion on the city council meeting schedules, I should say, upcoming schedules. I would look to cancel the January fourth regular city council meeting. I will also be, we're shifting, as a reminder, the Tura meeting from the first week of the month to the second meeting of the month. So I just wanted to remind everyone here. When we're all together, I am asking to cancel next week's meeting mostly because I have not had time to prepare, given the special meetings this month. And also to take a little time off with the New Year holiday. So I want to check in with all of you to make sure that's okay, and there's no pressing business, and if so, then to inform you all to not show up for the January fourth meeting.
Do, does anybody have concerns about counseling the January fourth meeting? Okay, it sounds like, and I, and I hope you're feeling better too.
I am getting there.
Yeah, it's awful, all these diseases. Counselor Greider?
Thanks. So then, the meeting is January tenth, Jordan, is that?
Let me pause.
It's still Tuesday, right?
It'll still be Tuesday, temporary time being, switching it to the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay, so yeah, I think it's the tenth. And then I wanted to, I. I know there was some. Frustration in the. In the comments about. The Zoom versus in-person meetings, and I think this is. Different and understandable, because this was a special meeting and kind of during a holiday break time. But with those other meetings that will be scheduled, the town hall, the public hearing, are you planning on having those in person? And will you just be checking with us on dates for those, or are you just setting them and let us know?
Yeah, so all regular meetings moving forward will be in person in town hall. We did give it two good goes to try hybrid out for those meetings, we've gotten feedback that they were painful for audience members who are via Zoom. So we will be having only in-person meetings until we can upgrade our audiovisual equipment, hopefully in February. For the town hall and for the public hearing, the public hearing will be our regular city council meeting on February fifteenth. So that one will be in person, hopefully we'll have audiovisual equipment by then. Town hall, I'm going to set likely two dates for, one for an in-person town hall and one for a virtual meeting so that those who want to participate via Zoom can, can do so. Since it is going to be a public-focused one, I'm likely going to just let you guys know of the dates rather than scheduling, make sure we have form. But I will put word out there just in case folks really want to attend.
Great, thank you. I like the idea of both options for people. Some people, it is more accessible on Zoom, but the in-person is great.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Byers?
Totally understandable that we are waiting to be hybrid until we have the equipment to keep up with our dream. I'm wondering if our audio will be recorded for people to listen to at those in-person meetings so that those who can't make it can at least stay abreast of all of the information and details shared.
Yes, we are able to audio record and then later on post that recording, and it's much better quality than if we're trying to stream. So we will post audio, like, done before the pandemic.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, and I, and yeah, that's what my memory says, when, before the pandemic, when we just had audio, it was really good, you could understand what was going on, as long as counselors remember to speak right into the microphone. Okay, great. Anything else for that agenda item? Seeing none, the next is adjournment, so we will adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-five. Thanks, Jordan, Elaine, everybody for pulling it together. Appreciate it.
Happy New Year to you all.
Thanks, Jordan.